We call the town horses planning board meeting order. I mean, a motion to accept the minutes from the members of the first two thousand twenty-three meeting.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll please.
Joey Atkinson.
Aye.
Alan Curran.
Aye.
Amy Crandall. Ken Castro.
Aye.
Matt Mustico.
Aye.
Tom Ski B.
All right, motion here. No correspondence. So we're gonna go into whole business. Under A two sixty D Journey Church one sixteen Grace Road. We welcome the town board P U D amendments. Yeah, I know we're explaining what you have for the list.
Uh, I prepared a. I prepared a. Proposed recommendation just going over where we where we. Sort of started with the uh with the addition. And the original approval of the uh offices. And the uh. Resolution passed by the town board with regard to the P U D. Um. Tried to give some of the history so that we we at least have it in one place at that point in time. And that they made an application for amendment to the P U D. And last meeting, we brought it down to just the fitness center. Correct, so the only change being requested. Is the fitness center. At this point in time, we we but the with the board has to remember those that is that. Many of the things that they had asked for. Uh, aren't necessarily things that would require action of the town board is when. Like we talked about the talked about the the concerts. Has been the main the main thing. And the issue with the concerts has been the 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 multitude of that. Uh, that doesn't mean they can't hold concerts, they can't hold things to fundraise, the church can't at that point in time. Cause one of the other issues that we've discovered is that the church was not putting on the concerts. I matter foundation was which. Basically, although you said you never collected any, you never had a formal agreement with them, they basically look like a tenant. Operating those things at this point in time, so that that became an issue also, but uh. Uh, we're we're down to the uh. We're down to a recommendation as the fitness center will be open to the public. And will be a membership. Membership uh item, so. And uh. So I I wrote the recommendation amended the. P U D. Uh, to show that the professional offices. And I I showed the fitness center being that in excess of two thousand square feet now. What we measured out where it is is like seventeen hundred. So I gave some option if they have an office or something like that, I thought, so you think I think that'll work. Up the up to you all if you're. So inclined. Your recommendation and if the town board's holding the public hearing next week. And they may well, we will, we will. This will be the base for the resolution after a decade council.
You can show it's page three that we're dealing.
You're you're dealing with page three.
So you're looking for a recommendation for us that the town board take that?
Yeah. And if you need anything, you need to add anything or anything else, I'm.
As far as being tenants and stuff like that type of thing. I mean, under their, if they do decide to come in with a concert venue or something like an I matter. They'd have to bring that back to the board.
You know.
Cause that's one of the things that would be a tenant.
I don't.
Barber shop.
I don't wanna say it's a fine line. But. When they start becoming. Commercial commercially oriented at that point in time. Uh, the there is there is case law. And there is uh actually discussions. Uh, when the Congress was talking about our Lupa. And a lot of things that they can do. You know, and one of the things in there is that they can have concerts, there's there's no question about those. Uh, when it's. Thursday, Friday, Saturday each week, then it becomes. Uh, something different, it uh, you know, we've, I don't know. I'm not sure how to define it commercially. But I think we've known when we've seen it. That it has been, you know, ten dollars for parking and charging for parking, charging. Serving alcohol, I mean, these became, these became things that were. Were beyond wh- what we would expect.
Over church.
Church and uh.
Probably did seeker, those things weren't addressed at the time either. The negative effects on the neighborhood. You know, uh, access noise, parking, those type of things.
Right.
Um, we would have done seeker all right, so.
Yeah, so uh. Uh. I think. Probably bad comparison, but the the Supreme Court when they. When they uh dealt with uh. Pornography, the one judge said, I can't define it, but I know it when I see it. So that's sort of where we are, we probably can't define. What is commercial, but we know it when we see it at that point in time.
Well, I do hope that this. Opens the eyes. Of the journey church and and. The town board or whatever the town. Greg code, whatever. That there's more communication than there was. And or better. Cause I understand there was a lot of situations where. One was being told not what was actually going on. Uh, you guys seem like you're gonna be more involved. Then what we were in the past, so.
Yes.
You know, back there at the meeting. I think you kind of work with us, so. I move that we give the. Proposed resolution of a positive recommendation to the town board.
Second.
We got a motion in a second, but any further discussion? Call the roll please.
Joey Atkinson.
Aye.
Amy Curran. Or Amy Crandall, oh my god. I know, I knew that all the time, Alan Curran.
Aye.
Matt Mustico. Ken Castro.
Aye.
Tom Ski.
All right, motion here.
Thank you.
Okay.
If you want, I I. Thank you so much for your patience and your understanding, if uh. It won't, it won't happen again.
We wish you well.
We do.
Make sure within the next month you contact the assessor. And I will talk to her also about what what we've done at this point in time.
Yes.
Because although you're stuck with that one tax bill, we we gotta. Uh, we hopefully can get. Get it changed so that it's not sixty-five percent of the church is taxable because we're not using. Right. That much at this point in time. Thanks again.
The 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 Nova Soul, we have long supply. Sixty-one below the west. Recommendation to the existing P U D. I'm not sore, right?
Yeah.
You only need a way to supply. So we're just here tonight, are you guys? Would anybody represent? Okay, um. So basically, what what we're gonna do tonight. Is they submit an application to amend the P U D to the town board. Now we make a recommendation back to the town board. On the proposed use. So if the town board. Accepts that. And change in amends the P U D to allow the solar project. Then it'll come back to us for site plan review. So only action tonight by us. Can make a positive or negative recommendation to the town board.
Okay, you guys all figured out. The the total thing about the P U D, cause I know that. At the last meeting, we were still kind of questionable between you and Greg of all the documentation for that.
He found that there was reason.
Okay.
And the 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 major, the major issues is setbacks. That. They're asking for, you know, to be excused from the the setbacks that would be required. If it was under the solar provisions. This is. Not a community project. And it's a, it's a, it's a private. Individual, so and doing it at his own property, so. It's kind of a. Little bit different than what we're used to.
Something we had. Had no idea that someone would be asking for really, right, when you put it all together.
Yes.
You can think of a solar array, it'd be on the roof or in the backyard. Or could be if it's commercial project, maybe in the back of their their buildings, you know.
Around the building, yeah.
So. Now he's different cause he owns piece of land across from me. And um. Wants to use it, so and it's just a recommendation.
What kind of, what kind of recommendations or or what kind of? Setbacks are we, I mean, I know if it was a building. It'd be obvious, cause he'd have building lots of setbacks that he'd be. But I mean, as far as a solar array, do we consider it like a structure? Or do we consider it more like?
It's an accessory use, but I mean, also make it a principal use on a property. Um, so right now. Again, look at that, all we're looking at is the. Proposed use that.
Right, right.
What goes into the rest of it.
Which is planning, or which would be a more site plan review.
Right.
Okay.
Hey, what's. I mean, I forget what the what the uh required setbacks would you. Look though, but uh.
Does this need to go to the county?
Yep. Yes, that'll be done at the town board level.
Okay.
Because the town boards, the uh. The. Will be nodding.
Gone.
No, no, I just did up the paperwork.
Okay, the town board will be the referring agency.
Okay.
They'll be doing the seeker on it also.
In in the village.
And.
Right, they'll have to go to both.
Yeah, village is.
Village too.
Village is right next door, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And right across. The railroad tracks are five hundred.
Yeah, they will be, right. Well, I, with the setback is, but they they wouldn't, they wouldn't be having it. The the solar panels themselves would be sitting, would be sitting back. The fence wouldn't, but we wouldn't be. Dealing with that anyway at that point in time. Uh, but the uh, the other thing they're 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 binging upon on the one side. From the from the neighboring property, we talk about seventy-five feet. And uh, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be maintaining that at that point in time. Uh. So, yeah. Up to you. I should wanna. Think about it another month, you probably have another month to be with it anyway.
Were we not waiting for an updated site plan?
Um.
All we're doing is looking at the use right now.
Okay.
So this, if. If the the down board doesn't.
Change anything.
Change the use, then.
You'll get this.
We won't get a site plan, then they go away. They don't change, but if they do, then it would have to come in with an updated site plan and and all that. And we'll get that area down there, it's. Kind of forgotten area of the town, there's, it's mixed.
It's really.
Residential. Business and manufacturing down there.
There's been a little of everything down in there over the years.
Salvage yard, really.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
But um. Not a high traffic area, there's. There's minimal housing down there.
Spaghetti palace.
Yeah. So the minimal housing. You get on that one side of the road, it's business. And good out farther, it's all manufacturing, so. The first, the apartments are in the village. I think one house across the street in the uh. Only gas people in the village.
Yeah, the the biggest issue is the size thing is. The setbacks are are supposed to be seventy-five feet. Uh, from front side and rear. So because it's a P U D, they can ask for something different, which they have. And it most. The the most impact is the is the front. Even though the sides won't be seventy-five feet. You know, in an, in a, in a manufacturing zone, it's really not that big of an issue.
And.
And the back, there's, they can't, nobody can do anything anyway.
And across the streets, business zone anyway, that's a twenty-five foot setback.
Right.
Does the setback start where the fence starts or where the solar panels?
Where the property line starts.
Okay.
So I think his question was, what what would be considered, it would be the panels, not the fence. Is what I heard.
Fence wouldn't be, yeah, the setback wouldn't be. To the fence, it would be to the panels, alright.
Yeah. Which. We got a fifty-four wide, probably wrote, wrote right away under with a twenty-eight foot road. So you're gonna hit a. Maybe twelve foot. Six foot. Inside.
Off that, yeah.
Yeah, before you start the um.
But property.
Property line. Then you go back from there.
So assumed, yeah, assumed fifty foot and then.
So your setback is actually based on center line?
No, it's based on the front property line, but in an area where it's a road by use, which this is. We would look at there, we would assume the road right away would be. Fifty feet, actually, it's three rods, which is four and twenty-five feet, fifty feet. So we would go twenty-five feet plus. Then the setback, so from the center of the road, it'd be a hundred.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's at the center of the road, didn't this where it's supposed to be?
Well, it is, cause it's a road by use, so it's wherever it is, it is.
Oh, okay.
You know, if it was, if we own the property. If we had a V, then it might be an issue, yes. Yeah, road by use can really move over the years.
Mm-hmm. And most of our. Round roads the last thirty years are. If we ever need for some divisions, but I think this is a county road. Down there. Anybody else, any other thoughts? A or name, a positive or negative recommendation? Or just a change of use? Do everything?
Most, most.
Yes.
But the next month, you won't have to be sitting there.
Yeah, right, so moved.
Okay.
Oh, I move for a positive recommendation for a change in the land you.
Okay.
There you go. A motion in a second, any further discussion? Call the roll please.
Joey Atkinson.
Aye.
Amy Crandall.
Aye.
Alan Curran.
Aye.
Matt Mustico.
Aye.
Ken Castro. Tom Ski B.
Aye, motion caring.
New joke. Thank you.
Alright.
Moving right along, um, new business. Number four forty-three. Three A, quicker management group LLC, one hundred and one X Avenue. Twenty-sixty-seven Lake Road. Minor subdivision and zoning change from P U D business. Is that you guys?
Yes. All right, come up here.
Here, come out.
Um, look, there's a square, this pump is. Terrence Payne with me, is the architectural graphic major. Um, we're here. Park four Crickler, um, and you guys probably saw there. Listed the property for sale for subdivision, so. Um, we're here. Looking to subdivide the lot and the, on my high school district's being the buyer. So we're here to um. Get your approval on the subdivision. Um, and then the next meeting, we'd have the full. Flat drawings for that. And then with that subdivision, we're asking that that be um. Known as a business districts, and then the Crickler piece would be on the P U D.
Alright, so we've got, I see seven points, so make this one up, when you divide that up?
Uh, seven total with five left.
Five left, okay.
Fish.
She is.
Three point one nine for the subdivision. And then four point nine nine, I mean. So the, the purchase agreement is based on a. Two point one nine. That's what the agents came up with.
So.
So the, the remaining P U D will still be true.
More, more than true, it'll be.
Almost five nine nine five.
Okay, so we that, so that's, okay.
Yeah.
So the other portion size doesn't matter.
But this has probably been some divided ones before you stepped and you spoke on all this, right?
Yeah, yeah.
When you had the um. Doggy. Once there, and that was all part of his farm, I believe. Or I'm getting.
Yeah, sure.
Well, then.
Good for you.
Good for you. Maybe next week, I'll. So he's just gone to the town board and all. Or consideration back to us?
No. In range of us.
Yeah, we sent it, so it gets started.
It started.
As it was, uh, yeah, so I mean, you're.
We have all the things we can.
Actually, you're just really pat set.
Got it, so good.
At this point, yeah, so.
We gotta call a public hearing for. Next month or next month. For the minor subdivision.
So our, our goal would be to get the file approval next meeting, so that they can prepare a referendum from March. The vote, um. Basically developing that.
Okay, the the minor subdivision. On what public hearing, they can approve it that night.
Yep.
And then they can stamp the final flat if you have that.
Yep.
And sign it to.
Yeah, I think I have to tell the real estate lawyers. We'd file it before the purchase or they file with the purchase, that's all, and I'm not sure about, but. In that month, real estate lawyers figure out.
No, no, there's no issue there. But the 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 other issue would be their their recommendation with regard to. The change of zoning, so you need, we need to get that movement at the, at the town board level.
We're gonna make him come, go to the town board and then get back to us, or can we?
I would think, just operate them both. In concert, yeah. I would, you know.
Why it's. It'd be another month for.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's only, I mean, this business all the way around here. And I, it used to be business, and then when they did this. And they put that building there. And they do the whole thing here, you know.
Well, they, yeah, they did it because the the, that use did not fit in a business zone. So it it ended up being.
Wasn't it?
Foddy or something?
Wasn't it two, wasn't it residential down here, and then?
Yeah.
We just made the whole parcel.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Cause that was done with the way eighties, I believe.
Whatever.
Sure.
I'm sure I was there, I'm just not sure when.
I remember a big go. Um. So the first thing we need to. Need a motion to set the public hearing for the next meeting, which is January third.
For the minor.
For the minor subdivision.
Yeah.
So moved. Second. Yeah, your motion second, any further discussions? Call the roll please.
Joey Atkinson.
Aye.
Amy Crandall. I'm Alan Curran.
Alright.
Matt Mustico.
Aye.
Ken Castro. Tom Ski B.
Aye, motion caring, so next month, we'll have a public hearing. For that minor subdivision. Um. So second thing we need to look at is. We make a recommendation to the town board. On those resuming from finding a development. To business.
Just uh.
Just for that, that two point one acre parcel located on the border of. Lake Road and one X Avenue.
We'll make the motion to change the use from P U D to business for the two point sign. Or two point one nine acre.
Make recommendation to the town board, yeah, okay. Yeah, the most.
Second.
A motion in second, call the roll please.
Joey Atkinson.
Aye.
Amy Crandall.
Aye.
Alan Curran.
Aye.
Ken Castro. Matt Mustico.
Aye.
Tom Ski B.
Aye, motion caring. Now, do we need to know now about which school it is for?
Yeah, bus garage.
Bus garage, yeah, moving in a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And once that gets turned over to the school district, we will be able to say that it's a school district property. Right?
Yeah.
Well, outside of school board meeting, right?
Yeah, will be, yeah, will be done.
Will be done, because that way, um. Um. State education, but we handle all that.
Yeah.
Afterwards, so.
If there's a sign or anything that it needs to run there, it's coordinating for that to. Just be an extra.
It'll be, I wrote anyway, and.
Is this called a campaign?
Yeah, um.
They do, I'm just asking, looking to him, man.
Yeah, I know.
For the subdivision, or?
Yeah, yeah, we got something coming.
Coming.
And uh.
Why? I don't know, but.
It's not a change of uses, it's a.
You were not.
We're not, we haven't done it in the past, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, and there's nothing there to.
Impact.
Yeah.
Dividing way, yeah, good point. Well, there's me and all words of our resident, our business setbacks, you know, so anything we care about.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if. Anyone knew events, is that, is the residence on that lot too? Cause it would be a vegetative buffer, which is. Fine for us to include our design. I just.
There's a house there.
Yeah, I was just. But it's like maybe even an apartment or a house.
It used to be at one time, a um. It kept a professional office in there.
Where was the psych eye?
Is that what it was? Its own business there too, so. If it was a business. It was a residential district next door, then. It would require some type of offer of business, so.
Okay.
To be a good neighbor, you probably could do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's good, we're done, we see it next month for.
And I, I give it ten that. Probably recommend it to ten to the town board meeting too, be standing questions.
Um, yeah.
Next, next week, right?
Who would own Lennox Avenue?
It's done.
Is it town?
County.
Alright.
The whole time, we progress. But what exists, any panel? Must be probably down in this town.
Over.
It's over on the other side.
When it crosses, when it crosses over, uh.
Miracle Mile.
Yeah.
Town, county can go from the lake over to. Any driveways or anything like that at all, whatever, keep it county highway, yeah.
And then. This. S C D to state education bar, as far as just the satellite of the highway. So we acknowledge. Drive.
Right, yeah.
So. Have they, have you done a letter to the town board to ask me for resuming?
No.
Probably should get that in, so get on the agenda.
Get that in, uh. Tomorrow, Friday morning at the latest. You in tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, so you can tell Kathy.
Okay.
And get that on the agenda, John.
Good. Moving right along.
Yeah.
And then I'm up for. The brief sing, did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, eighteen ninety-two Grand Central Avenue. Amendment to site plan review, adding a drive through window.
In the north shop, right?
Our side. Not wanting additional to building, right?
Just the window, so we have our, we have a window made, but we know for the. The drive through window. So we can just. Up to for the. Drive. There's nothing like.
No.
No construction, no, that's nothing like that.
There is. There's not gonna be a. Like driving into McDonald's and you order from the outside, that, that, you're not.
No, no.
Anything that, okay.
It's a walk up, or is it cars gonna be driving?
So car, when we're driving to like some, what it call in, we have a Ford too. So they can pick it up, then have to wait for inside.
Yeah, we have the additional parking in the backside, so they can just park it back and then wait, they don't.
If you're just in site plan showing those four spaces in the front.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then everything else is in the back.
Yeah, ten to be a nice place in the back.
So you can clear right around.
So you're not affecting anything.
No.
At all.
Yeah. Yeah.
Greg, did you have any issues, Greg, or anything, or?
No, um, cuz they, so they. Uh, the applicant mentioned that in the beginning, that they had a plan for one in the future. Um, which is why we kinda uh, helped them. Place those parking place spots where they were. So it wouldn't negatively affect the drive-through in the future, so, um. No, uh, no issues from me, I I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward, so.
Okay, um. We could just amend her. Site plan, I can't see. Sending this to the county or anything, you're not effect affecting. It's your, 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 uh, road cuts. Not affecting, taking away parking. I don't think it'll be stacking up for the roadway that don't get the ones to in those places.
You could only hope.
Dairy Queen, yeah.
Would would the driveway be marked? To show direction?
Is it?
And then there's a stop that's there. Uh, you know, when people get guilty. If you ride through, I have a couple, if you take an ass, you can't peace. And then what about bullets out, protect the building, and then. Customers coming out of the door.
You give out the phone.
And they go to the parking lot. It's a point.
Oh, out back, you know, yeah.
People walk all over the place.
Well, that's true.
It's not knowing that there's a car coming out backside. When you're on your phone, or.
They'd be going, they'd be going in, around, and then.
It's on one side, like one way.
They're on the south, south side of the building, yeah. For the parking. Then around the building. And then come out the other way.
Yeah.
I don't know if it'd impact their, their front door certainly wouldn't.
Yeah, the front door is, I don't, I don't think.
Yeah.
It's in the middle.
Yeah.
It's no different than like K F C or anything, they have. Their drive.
It'll look, it'll look exactly like K F C, except you won't have all the outside.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll.
But it's not gonna affect the front door, the where it is at, and, yeah, definitely not.
So it's, you know, you're on the drive, free entry for the next.
Yes, you got all those parking spaces, but you probably haven't had a customer park there yet, I would assume.
The max?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know, I know, a lot of customers only like three months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but. There are like three, four people who know they can park in the back, but it's like really busy or rush in the front, so they do know how to park in the back, so they do, yeah.
The only thing I would say is, is if there's, like you're saying, is maybe have something there. Valor or something like that, to kinda give us everybody a warning. Place for somebody walking.
Like, uh.
You know what I'm saying, or whatever like that, is coming around that corner.
Yeah, but we.
Blindly walking directly into a car.
Right.
That's sitting at the drive-through.
Mm-hmm.
And then them rolling away, trying to figure out, you know, get their trigger, whatever they're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Every servant there, you know, ends it. But, I mean, it makes a point. There's something.
So they can't walk, yeah, without, yeah. Can't walk towards the north and around the north side, right?
Yeah, but when we have the signs, like, oh, you know, in which directions, though, it is going out, I think, so it's gonna be a problem.
Uh, just to consider, next to the building, somebody hugging the building and coming around that.
You could even put some, they've been marking this down there too.
Yeah.
Showing the drive-through, like McDonald's, there's a hatch area. From right there, then there's parking off to the side, might be a way to. Make it so it's, um. Visible.
I mean, I've seen places where, you know, and I'm not gonna ever say that, but with stupid gears up there and all that, that's the thing, you know. Like, always ever gonna pay attention to something like that, right? It's one of those things.
I think this is a low impact, again.
Potential.
Yeah. Again, I don't think it's the.
I can work with it, for signage.
Yeah.
And on any kind of quick modifications. And actually, once you guys get going at it, you'll, you'll see more of that situation. And they wanna make a change.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the site plan?
Just the amendment. Amendment, so amendment, site plan.
A minor modification to the site plan. That way, we only have to send it to the county. Right, there are any wells, so.
Okay, well, I'll move this. We approve a minor site plan modification. On nine oh four eight.
Exactly. Motion in second, let me through the discussion. All right.
Joey Atkinson.
Hi.
Amy Crandall, and. Kenny Castro.
Hi.
Matt Mustico.
Hi.
Alan Curran.
Hi.
Tom Stevie.
I'm motion carrying.
Yeah, good luck.
The onset.
Also.
Thank you so much, thank you. Second nineteen one four seven.
Yeah.
Alright.
Probably should know, but, you know.
Yeah, that was kinda close, handles on that, neck or sock.
Yeah. It was on the agenda, so we just. Get that out, I mean, if it was.
I think.
High volume points, then we would. You know, you're gonna get a car maybe two minutes, I mean. Not worth.
The only, the only thing is, is I would, I would. Recommend to Greg. Possibly, and or us to. That if they are planning a future thing. We include it in.
I'm using this exact way.
On that first, the first time through. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. If it does happen, we've got it covered.
We talked about it, I told them, I think we should bring it back, so.
Okay, okay, no, no, it's, it's good, it's just.
Yeah, they were.
And we've done that before, you get a lot of plans without lines on them as to things that.
Future fates do, or.
Yeah.
Future.
Yeah, they, they were. That was a tough one from the start with them, cuz we, you know, they, they. Wanted to do the addition. Wasn't included in the original plan. Uh, and then, so. To get them going originally was, hey. Tell me what you wanna do now, so we can. Move forward. Um, but yeah, I agree, and that's usually what we tell everyone is. Bring your site plan with everything you may ever want to do. To get approval once, and you can. You know, get everything done, but, uh. That's just a little bit of a different case on that one, but.
No problem.
Alright, good, moving on. For the go-to horse says, Lance Holdings, thirty-three twelve South Main Street. Special permit. You utilize thousand square feet in space for cannabis cultivation. So all we're looking at, its impacts on the town. It is within the five hundred feet of a municipal line. You can make comments.
One hundred.
Comments on. Any adverse. Impacts on the town. We can do a positive or negative or local determination by individual persons. It's a thousand square feet.
This looks like a growing, there's not gonna be any retail there, town, you know?
Says.
Can't be.
Greenhouse and plant nurseries are a special permit.
Yeah.
So they must be, are gonna make s- make seeds into plants, must be, I'm guessing, probably.
They gotta have a license from O C N, or. Yeah.
Yeah, they, it says they need to be low visibility.
Yeah.